We are here as a special meeting of the City Council Work Session held at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, January 30th, 2024. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the City Council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentation. Clerk Meredith, would you like to? Do we need to do a roll call?
We don't, we do not have to, but I can if you'd like.
No, we're good. We've called the meeting to order already. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if we could. And Vice Mayor, would you lead us, please?
Absolutely. After me, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And once again, we appreciate you taking time of all of us for your busy schedules to be here today.
Mayor Watkins?
Yes.
I apologize. We do have an action item on the agenda today, so if City Attorney Cooper agrees, I do believe we should do a roll call just to verify a quorum.
I, I agree with you. Let's do it. Turn some time over to you, Annie.
Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Eric? He is, he is with us on Zoom. Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Right.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Once again, I appreciate you all being here for this important discussion today that we're going to have. Item number one, year-to-date financial recap and look-forward work session. Council, city manager, finance, and individual departments. City staff will present to the council a fiscal year 2024 year-to-date financial summary and financial forecast for fiscal year 2025 through 2029. Manager Miller?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor and Council. As you're aware, we're here to present the current fiscal year revenues and expenditures, as well as a forecast for next fiscal year and beyond. The figures you'll be reviewing or seeing tonight are based on assumptions that we have historically used in Kingman, and I think they have served us very well in the past. Because the city is financially conservative in its revenue and expenditure forecasting, you can rest assured that we're very close typically, historically, with the numbers that we have forecasted these types of sessions in the past with the actuals that you'll see throughout the year. The, the major caveat I just want to share with you is there are always what I call externalities. There's things like the legislature actions that they can take, and right now, we know that they have a one and a half billion dollar budget shortfall that they're trying to address, and they're going to try to do that as well for next fiscal year. We also have seen in the past how things like Consumer Price Index or inflation have been drivers on a lot of our commodities and other costs that affect the cost of doing business for cities and towns. And then also labor costs. We've been seeing labor costs, you know, impacting our costs as well. And then things like interest rates could very well affect. Right now, it looks like we're going to be seeing a downward trend, hopefully, with interest rates, but in the past, interest rates have kind of caused an issue not only with what we pay for goods and services, but also on housing and causing housing construction to actually slow down, which then impacts us on our one-time construction sales tax. In the event that we do observe such impacts during the year, we're very quick to react and, and plan accordingly and right the ship, so to speak, and I have every bit of confidence in the deputy city manager, finance director, and the staff to be able to do that if the need does arise, so we can continue to focus on what I would call core services. Finally, just a few last remarks. I think Tina has done a super job, as usual, in working with department directors and their key staff in identifying program and service delivery costs, drivers to their budgets, and other impacts, to include this information as part of our analyses that you'll see tonight. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Tina, and as always, please feel free to ask questions along the way. Tina?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Grady. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We'll get right started. I know we have another important agenda item after this one, so we'll move through this, and please interrupt as you see fit to ask any questions that, that are pressing. Let's see. Well, let me fix that. Okay, great. So the agenda today, we're going to look a little bit at the economy. We're going to look at our fiscal year '24 year-to-date budget versus actuals, the status on our fiscal year '24 capital improvement projects, our five-year forecast, funding sources specifically related to the election, and next steps in the budget process. Next slide. Next slide.
You didn't share your screen, right?
I thought I did. Perfect. Can I page down? Okay, moving on to the economy. So as Grady stated, we look at inflation, we look at interest rates, we're looking at building permits, not just nationally and in the Phoenix area, but certainly as a rural community, we want to look at our building permits here, what's going on with building activity here. And then, of course, we want to look at the state of Arizona. We rely heavily on state shared revenues and what they're projecting and what they're saying in the executive budget, we want to pay close attention to. So what is happening with inflation and how does the Fed funds rate affect it? So back in the middle of calendar year '22, we hit all-time highs, not all-time highs, long-time highs of inflation at eight to nine percent. And so the Federal Reserve began increasing Fed funds rate, and you can see how by them increasing the Fed funds rate, it has definitely affected inflation in a good way. And so where we are at the end of December is the national rate is just over three percent, the Phoenix rate is just under three percent, so we're averaging about a three percent inflation rate. So what they put into place and the tool that they use certainly worked for the purpose of reducing inflation, and we are taking into account that type of inflation into our forecast. Now, other than inflation, what else is affected by the Fed funds rate? And there are a couple of things. For us, it's our borrowing rate, so obviously, as the rates increase, the cost to borrow money increases. And just looking at what we have been paying for leases over the last few years, you can see how the Fed funds rate has affected that. Back in July of '21, we were paying well under three percent to borrow money. Our pension obligation bonds were well under that as well. And today, our most recent lease was 4.93 percent, so close to five percent. But on the flip side, we're also earning quite a bit of money, and our investments held at the pole there in money markets, there in U.S. Treasuries, and so you'll see how that has also affected us in a good way. Back in December, the general, December of 2021, the general fund only collected $84,000 in investment earnings. In fiscal year '24, we're expecting to collect $1.5 million. So while we can't expect those types of monies to come year over year, it certainly helps for those one-time expenses that, that we want to use those monies towards. So then where are we with new building permits? And I say new building permits issued because new building permits issued means that there's population growth, there are sales tax increases, and as Grady alluded to, those one-time construction sales tax dollars. And right now, we're using those one-time construction sales tax dollars to go towards our capital projects, so it helps fund that five-year CIP. So in 2023, we only had 138 new single-family residential building permits issued. We expected that, something low, but we are already through November at 90. So we're expecting that 240, about 244 will be issued at the end of this year, and we expect an upward trend over the next few years. We know that there are some big subdivisions that are coming into play, and a lot of homes will be built, so we are expecting an upward trend. And we're expecting about a level trend with our new commercial building permits. We had a couple of hotels this year, some storage places, so we expect that trend to continue at about this level. So looking at the governor's executive budget, which she issued in the middle of January, what were some key fiscal takeaways that we want to pay attention to? One of those is that they stated in the budget that economists are estimating a 50% probability of a recession in 2024. That doesn't mean that it's a major decline, it just means that maybe it's just very slow growth, and that's what they're expecting. State income tax is going to start recovering in 2020, fiscal year '25. So if you remember, the state reduced income tax or cut income tax in 2023, and so they're expecting that after those, that couple years of the reduction in fiscal year '25, things will start to recover, certainly not to maybe what they were before or what we saw maybe after COVID, but at least not decline, which is what they are going to expect for the first couple of years. State transaction privilege tax collection, so their tax rate, they are expecting an increase, just a slight increase, though, so, but maintaining slow growth. They are expecting that fuel, vehicle fuel tax estimates for this year are actually going to be lower than what they originally expected, and that is going to hit us in the HERF revenues, and we are seeing that. It's not going to be a major hit, but it is going to be a reduction. And then we know about the one-time recovery of transportation appropriations to cities and towns who had not yet spent those monies. It was an effort to help reduce their deficit of 1.5 to 1.7 billion dollars, and so that is also in their executive budget. Nothing, none of our projects are listed, but as I stated, the legislative session is still, it's still early in session, and any of these things can change. So let's look at where we are year-to-date, as far as where we budgeted versus what we're actually experiencing. So let's look at TPT. TPT is our largest revenue source for the general fund, and it is the largest single recurring revenue source for the entire city. It comprises 55% of the general fund's revenue, and of the total TPT received, 91% of that is collected within the general fund. The rest is distributed to streets, tourism, and capital projects. So where are we to date? Well, we did budget a slight decrease this year, expecting a slight recession, and we are seeing that. So as you see, in fiscal, through, through November, we do see less collections than where we were at the same time last year, but it's not a major decline, and I don't expect that we will not meet our budgeted expectations for collections. And you'll see that we've collected about 43% of our total collections through November, which is, which is, which is normal, so we should, we should meet the budgeted levels. Moving on to our state shared revenues, they are the second-largest revenue source for the general fund and the largest revenue source for our streets. They comprise 36% of the general fund's revenue and 70% of the streets' revenues. And just so everyone is aware, our state distributions to cities and towns, they are calculated mostly on population as in relation to the state's overall population, but our vehicle license tax and our HERF monies also take into account the popu, our population in relation to the county, as well as vehicle registrations in the county and vehicle fuel tax in the county. So there are a few other factors involved. And so where are we with these also? So this, I'm going to explain a little bit of what this slide looks like, but as far as where we are year-to-date, and do we think we're going to meet those, those budgeted amounts? Yes, we are in line with meeting what we budgeted. We may be slightly, slightly over. We are seeing a little bit of an increase in, in the state sales tax right now. But when we look at where we're at in, in sales tax, which that, you can see that we have experienced that year-over-year slight increase, vehicle license is pretty flat, HERF is pretty flat, but the urban revenue sharing, which is commonly known as the income tax sharing that we collect from the state, you'll see is very high in fiscal year '24, and that is not going to continue in the future. This happens to be just because of when the state passed the income tax cuts, cities and towns and the league were outraged because that meant reduced collections for cities and towns, and we had no control over that. And so fortunately, the league and mayors and councils were able to pass that, an increased percentage of income tax collections in order to make us whole. So for this particular year, we are receiving 18% instead of 15%. We will continue to receive 18% going forward, but this particular year is still based on the old income tax rates. So the new income tax cuts have not gone into place for our collection purposes yet. Next year, we'll see that reduction, so it's kind of a one-time bump for all cities and towns.
Tina?
Yes, sir.
I know they gave us this bump, but that was also because they took away, for example, sales tax on leasing or rental income. Is that, that's why this was given, or is that, was that something different?
No, it was totally related to the income tax cuts.
Just income tax.
Yep, completely related to that.
Because there was something else, I thought, I know when I talked to Representative Gillette, he said, well, we did make you, tried to make you whole on this thing. Do you remember what that was?
We're going to talk about that in the next few slides. Yep, I do, I have that to point out. So let's just look at the overall general fund's revenues, not just state shared revenues and TPT, but what the general fund is experiencing. And so we are about, through November, that's about 42% through the year. So if we just look at the bottom of this table and we see the percentage that we have collected of what was budgeted, we are above that at 45%. So again, I expect that our general fund will experience, experience increases above what we budgeted, not anything, not anything too much, but we will experience a slight increase in what was budgeted. And then when we look at our expenses, although we budget, you know, full personnel, meaning no vacancies, and every single operating expense spent, when we forecast, we never forecast that all of the monies are going to be spent. We don't ever spend all of the monies. So we never want this number down here to be 42%, and it's not, right? So that means we're in line with what we expected this year and what we're going to expect in the future years. Thirty-five percent is a good number for us. So then moving on to HERF. HERF revenues, very similar story. We're at 42% collections. There's really not much to talk about here. It's, it's TPT, restaurant and bar tax, and HERF revenues. Those are the major contributors as far as, as far as revenues are concerned. We know that the general fund is transferring quite a bit of money into HERF, and we'll look at that in, in some other slides, but we're right where we need to be for HERF, too, so I don't expect any, any issues there. Looking at expenses, I was excited to put this slide together, actually, because normally when we share this slide, we don't, we really don't spend all of it at this time in the year. We normally, in the springtime, is when we might take on some of those street projects, and that's when we'll see some of those projects take place. Or sometimes the money just carries over, but this year, you'll see that 56% of our HERF expenses have been spent, and I'm, I'm really excited for you to hear Jack's report at the next council meeting. He'll be able to share that as well, but this is a really great slide to be able to share with you, that we are spending the money on our streets. And then we definitely never want to forget about our enterprise funds. Of course, the enterprise funds are water, wastewater, solid waste, and airport funds. Our users pay for those funds, but we always want to look at them and see where we are as well. We looked at a water rate increase last year, and we know we're going to be coming to you for another increase. We've looked at solid waste and had solid waste rate increases in the past, so we just want to make sure that they're keeping up with what we expect and what we need in order to meet our expenses, and they look healthy right now. Yes?
On these enterprise funds, I understand that we're not finding trash trucks that come in at budget because they've gotten so much more expensive, and so we're not having an easy time replacing those trucks, which we were supposed to do every year, one a year, right? So will we need to increase those solid waste, the collection again in order to get back on track with the trucks?
Yeah, you're taking my thunder in the next few slides.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, and that's a great point, and that is exactly the reason we've got in here that in the future, and actually in April, we're going to be bringing a report to you to look at solid waste rates.
Okay, and it's been two years, maybe, since?
This will be that we're in our third year of no rates.
This is the third year. Okay. And is there like an, an average among cities, how often they're relooking at those, or is this kind of a new norm because after COVID, the cost of items have just kind of skyrocketed?
So most cities and towns look at their rates at least every three to five years, so that is the norm.
Okay. All right, thank you, Tina.
You're welcome. So then looking at our enterprise fund expenses, just like the general fund, we never want it to be the full amount, right? And with the, especially water and wastewater, we budget for unexpected repairs to very expensive wells, very expensive treatment plants, and we don't always spend all of that money either, so we wouldn't expect this to be a higher number. So we're right in line with what we would normally see with these funds as well. All right, so moving on to the status on the fiscal year '24 capital improvement projects, and it does not include the enterprise fund projects. Normally, when we present in January, we will share the five-year capital improvement plan with you. We talk about the projects, but we don't give a lot of status updates. It's really just any questions that you might have. And when you expressed concern at the end of, during our budget work sessions last year, that you wanted to check on the progress, we thought this was the best way for you to be able to see in January how things are progressing before we get to the end of the fiscal year. So that's what this is intended to do for you today, and it was perfect timing because last week, Mr. Miller and I met with all of the departments to go over the capital improvement projects and the progress and any new ones that might be submitted. So the timing worked out great on this. So we've got some, our facility, basically, our facility and system-type projects, and I'm not going to go through every single one, but I want to go through a couple that have carried over to give you an idea of where we are today. One of those is the City Hall HVAC replacement. It has been on our list for a few years, and Jack's been trying to get the quotes down and been working with vendors over the last few years, and we finally have a quote that's within budget, and we're going to be able to move forward with that project and get it completed by the end of this year. So that's a good one. The Powerhouse Roof Overlay is also another one that has been on the list. This is a great one that's, that is grant-funded, and so now that we have the grant funding and it's been awarded, we are working with a contractor and a design firm to put together what that's going to look like. So this, too, is one that is moving forward. Any other ones on here? We have the Project Management Platform, that is the Tracket replacement, so it's our building permit and our building permit software, and we are working on an RFP to hire a new vendor for implementation. So that will carry into next year because it's, it will be a long process, but we are working on that. Moving on to the Parks and Recreation side, unless you have questions on any of the other projects that are listed there, if you want to talk about the progress, I don't want to just move forward, great. We will go on to the Parks and Recreation projects, then. On this particular one, the Lewis Kingman Park upgrades and Sunbelt Sports Park, I just want to highlight, the Lewis Kingman Park upgrades, we have gotten our grant funding of just about 50% for it, and a construction contract is going to be taken to council for consideration very soon, so we'll get to move forward with that. And again, that's improving the Ramadas and the restrooms. It'll, it'll be a great improvement. And Sunbelt Sports Park, well, design is underway. You just approved a design contract, so that's exciting, too. Okay, moving on to public safety. How exciting is it? All of KPD's projects are going to be completed this year, so that is great news. Jack and the police department have been hard at work in making sure that that happens this year. With fire, it's a little bit of a different story. There, we're experiencing the same thing with all of our vehicles and large fleet and large equipment, and that is long lead times. Unfortunately, it's even worse for our fire apparatus. The long lead times, we found out from Chief Jaeger last week, three to four years to get, to get an apparatus replacement. So what he's looking at and what he's kind of going back to the drawing board is maybe doing some demos. Again, they don't take as long to build, and, and they're cheaper, right? So he's, he's looking at that option instead. Moving on to streets. So you're going to see this at the, whenever we come back in April during the work session, a lot of equipment is still being delayed across every division, whether it's a dump truck for parks or some sort of piece of equipment for streets. It's across the board, we're still seeing delays. So there are a few pieces of equipment on here that we're able to move forward with. There are some that aren't, and so it will still be the story in, in the budget process. A couple of things, a couple of items on here, the downtown infrastructure project's going to be completed this year, so that's great. And the Eastern Street improvements, I think that's a very exciting one. It's been on here a very long time, and so we just issued a pre-construction services contract or awarded that contract, construction contract, thank you, and so it'll be moving forward, too, so. And the rest of the projects have statuses there if you have any questions on any particular Okay, we'll move forward to the five-year forecast for fiscal year '25 through '29. So there are a few major level of service changes included in the five-year forecast, and that is that the Sunbelt Sports Park is going to open, the Recreation Community Center, we're assuming, is going to open, traffic interchanges, we're assuming are opening, and Fire Station Five, we're going to assume is opening as well. That's included for major level of service changes. So I want to talk, I want to take a few slides to talk about the assumptions used during this. So we are seeing signs of an economic recovery beginning in late fiscal year '25. Now, what we are making sure that we include in this is exactly what the mayor was alluding to, which is taking into account the elimination of our residential leasing and rental tax category. Last year, the legislation passed a bill that eliminated all cities and towns' ability to tax residential leasing, and so all cities will lose that, that income. For us, it will be a 300, about a $300,000 impact each year, so we are taking that into account. Also, we are taking into account the stakes, the state's income tax cuts, so those are also included in the assumptions used. So in the table, you'll see the major categories of revenue for the general fund specifically as far as the projected revenue growth over the next five years. I, I want to point out that in, for, for TP- I want to point out that in, for, for TPT in fiscal year '27, you'll see a pretty big jump, and the reason behind that is there's, we're assuming the interchanges are going to open, there's going to be some retail, and we're hoping some great revenue that's going to be generated, and so that's what, that's what the increase reflects. All right. All right, so looking at the general fund, what are some of the assumptions that we're using? We know how, well, very first thing is that the public safety step plans, pay plans are funded in every single year, so that's about $300,000 a year. And then just the other personnel costs, whether it be we do a COLA, you want to do a pay plan shift, just a general increase. We know that new FTEs are asked for in the general fund and granted. We know reclasses are done, we know benefits increase, so all of those we're putting, we're taking into account, and that's about a $700,000 increase each year. We are assuming that additional TPT revenue is going to be generated from the TI's opening, and with those TI's, we know that we're going to be incurring some debt, some debt on Kingman Crossing to build Kingman Crossing Boulevard south of I-40, and debt for Rancho Santa Fe Parkway TI and the connector roads. So it does take into account those debt, those debt issuances too. There will be some ongoing costs for Sunbelt Sports Park opening up, there will be some people and equipment needed, we will receive some additional revenue too. So we're thinking that the net ongoing cost for Sunbelt Sports Park will be about $100,000 a year. Also with the recreation center, same thing, we'll need people, we'll get some revenues, so the net ongoing cost for the recreation center, about $500,000 a year. For Fire Station 5, it's all about people, right? And so it is a big cost, and in fiscal year '28, if, if everything goes as the assumptions, as the assumptions project, we will incur $1.7 million in additional personnel costs starting in fiscal year '28. And with that, we've always talked about Fire Station 5 and whether there is some sort of sub, police substation, and sometimes it's yes, and recently it's been no, but no matter what, we know that we're going to need an additional squad in that area. And so we've also included that in our fiscal year '28. And so after all of those considerations and after all of the revenue projections, we, there is kind of leftover discretionary spending, right, of anywhere from $1 million to $1.75 million depending on the year to get to that 35% unassigned fund balance that you directed us to informally last year. So it also takes into account just having those monies assigned to just some random line so that you can see what it looks like if you did tap into those monies, those reserves. Okay?
I have a question about the, about Fire Station 5. If that's going to be open in '28, wouldn't we need to send, wouldn't we need to approve getting a design done this year, this upcoming year?
I wouldn't think it would be this upcoming year. Construction will take about a year, design will probably take six to nine months, so probably in fiscal year '26, maybe late '26. What do you think, Mr. Miller, about that timeframe?
Yeah, again, this is a five-year forecast, so, you know, I wouldn't just take that that seriously. I mean, we are planning on it, and we, we go ahead and plan on this cost. I mean, a lot of it, we're going to have to probably do probably sooner, and that might be the programming costs. So what I would say before you actually do the engineering and design is you just basically go through a program evaluation, which would basically determine like their, their needs, and then they can give you a cost per square foot to build. And I think that would be the next thing, and I would say probably about this time next year is when we would do that.
Okay. Okay, so those are the general fund assumptions, and for the enterprise funds, we are anticipating water rate increases through fiscal year '29. We are bringing a report to the council in late February, just a water system report so you can see where we're at. And then solid waste rate increases through fiscal year '29 as well, and that is to fund the fleet replacement. So that will be coming to you in April, just a report, and then we'll move forward based on your direction at that point. And in the water fund, we have a project, a Santa Rosa Transmission main project, that when we went through the water rate study last year, this was a project that was going to be funded with some debt and some cash reserves. This particular project will be coming to you actually in March to approve a financing for it to move forward, and it will incur about $400,000 a year in debt. And we are expecting user growth anywhere from 1% to 2.5% depending on the year. Now, overall, all of the funds, with the exception of the general fund that we've talked about for personnel, we're also anticipating something in personnel, whether that be, again, a pay plan shift, benefits, if there's new FTEs. So we put something into place, and depending on the fund, it could range anywhere from 3% to 6% on any given year, so we have that included. We also have ongoing operating costs for all funds of about 3.5% per year. And then capital costs, not capital improvement projects, so not the big construction projects, but projects like replacing irrigation systems and those smaller dollar capital costs of increasing of about 5% year over year. And we are anticipating a drop in our investment returns. So right now, it's over 5%. We expect by fiscal year '29, it'll be well below 2%, so. So I just have a table here of our general fund major revenue sources, TPT and shared, state shared revenues, just so you can see how the trend is, and it is upward for both of them. We don't need to spend much time on those. And then looking at our general fund revenues, expenditures, and transfers, so the inflows are the blue line, the outflows are the red line. We know that we are spending more and transferring out more in the general fund, both last year and this year, and it is primarily related to HERF. There's a lot of money that we're transferring to streets. Typically, what you want these lines to do is kind of go in line with each other, and you want the blue line usually to be more than the red line. However, we have reserves that we're able to use to create or offset that deficit, and that's what we're doing throughout these out years. Again, making sure that we're maintaining that 35% level, and if anything ever exceeds it, then putting those monies back into some sort of program or service.
Primarily one time.
Yes, yes, one time. Thank you. And then looking at that general fund fund balance policy, it is, a formal policy is in place that says we will maintain an unassigned fund balance of 25% to 50% of our budgeted expenditures and outgoing transfers. An informal policy that was, that staff was given direction on last year was to maintain that at about 35% so that we could continue to fund streets through fiscal year '30 and fund our public safety step pay plans. And you'll see that we get there at fiscal year '29 at about 34%. And, and that's to ensure that in those years, we can pay for the things that were expected, again, fire station, a police squad, and continuing to pay for streets. If we took it out and reduced our fund balance in the, in the more current years, we would be well below the 35% in the out years. So that explains kind of why we're in the 40s now and why we get down to the 30s in fiscal year '29. And there is no concern. In fiscal year '30, we are still able to fund the streets and will actually be at about a 30%, 36% fund balance level, so we're okay. So let's look at our HERF major revenue sources. Now typically, transfers from other funds aren't considered revenue, but it is the largest source right now for HERF, and so I thought it was important that we point that out. You'll see HERF and our restaurant and bar tax are pretty level with some slight increases, but that general fund is contributing quite a bit of money to HERF, $50 million over the course of seven years, so, and, and this goes to, to show that. And the same thing goes for our HERF revenues, expenses, and transfers. We want that blue line, right, to be just above the red line, and it's right in line with it. And again, this is just some excess reserves to ensure that we can, and again, for the one-time expenses like streets, that we'll use those reserves. And I want to point out the Street Repairs, Maintenance, and Improvements Program, just to show that, yes, we are able to fund that, we have the revenues to do it, and we are expecting to fund that through fiscal year '30. I have the $8 million figure here for expenses. When Jack puts together the program, he's working on it right now, it may fluctuate, but overall, the entire amount will get spent. And then we have our enterprise funds. Again, we don't want to forget about those. There's a lot of information on here, but really just showing that there are some anticipated increases in water and solid waste, just showing the healthy balances that they'll end up having in their reserves, and, and I don't have much, much more to share on the enterprise, enterprise fund slides. So I wanted to talk a little bit about funding sources because over the last year or so, we talked about ways to, how can we generate some recurring revenue to pay for streets or pay for public safety or pay for things, right? And so what are some of those major funding sources for recurring initiatives or programs? We have property tax is one of those, TPT is one, state shared revenue is one, and general charges for services, so again, golf fees, parks fees, those sorts of things, fines that the police, that the police issue. But anything, but charges for services, it's not going to generate much money, you know, if we increase those. State shared revenues, we have zero control over, so we really only have control over TPT and property tax. We don't have a property tax, so really, TPT, right? And so what does that look like if we wanted to take a TPT increase to the voters? Kind of what is that timeframe and what does the council want to start considering or think of considering at, you know, in a couple of years from now? We know that we need to take TPT increases to the voters in November of even numbered years. And so if we were to do anything this year, we have really until May to hold council work sessions, figure out the amount of an increase, how we want to inform and educate the public. And then after that, we would in June call the election to increase the TPT, and then in July, generate the question, the ballot language. But throughout, of course, there needs to be public outreach and outreach and outreach, want to continue to inform and educate the public, right? So is it the right timing right now to take something to the voters in November of 2024? And so what, yes, yes, Vice Mayor?
Before, before we get too far, what about, I didn't see any kind of opportunity for public safety tax, any option for a public safety tax? I know that's been some discussion. It's not been a whole lot of discussion, but.
This, it could go either way. It's really entirely up to the council what their desire would be. Either way, if you had a, you know, an increase for TPT that would go toward streets, or if it would be public safety, there would be offsets that would then go back into public safety, and then what's offset would help cover maybe street savings that can go toward streets, so. But the council, that would be something maybe at the retreat that you'd want to discuss, and I think that's going to likely be right after you have a manager. If I was a betting person, I would just say probably this year, as much as I think would be a good time to do it in terms of presidential election, you have a higher turnout, and that's the people you want to turn out for a question like that. In my opinion, I've expressed this to a couple council members, I think we're really behind the curve on this right now, to be, to be talking about it right now and to try to get something in time, because it takes a lot of public education, and I would also highly encourage you to have a citizens committee, like a blue ribbon committee, that studies the issues, try to figure out the best way to come up with a solution, which may be an increase in TPT, either for public safety or for streets.
Okay. Well, I just don't, I don't want it to all be about TPT. I would like us not to lose the discussion around public safety with.
So you're saying it could be fees or something, not just tax?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know. How's the rest of the council feel about that? At least having the discussion?
I'm always down for a discussion.
So I obviously won't be here, but maybe the, maybe Tina could schedule a workshop on this in the very near future, maybe in February, because the timing is just really, if this is something you want to seriously consider, then time is of the essence.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, just to ensure that I understand what you're asking, not necessarily to have a conversation about taking a, a TPT increase to the voters, but looking at a public safety fee instead, or looking at all of the different options?
All of it. Yeah. I, I think the more options and opportunity that we have to discuss, we, we're better informed.
Yep. Thank you. All right. And so I think we covered this slide as far as just factors to consider, so we'll have a, we'll have a work session to talk about the different recurring revenues that we can put into place. And so then what are the next steps in the budget process? So we've got our budget calendar here, and we have checked off two of the steps, and that is the capital improvement projects have been submitted by divisions and departments, and we are just about done with today's work session. What we have left is operating budget submissions will take place in March from, by all of the departments. And then late March, in order to meet those April work session timelines, we will meet with all of the departments to review their operating budgets, and then ultimately put together a recommended budget for the council to consider in late April, and then move through the budget adoption process. There was a strategic planning meeting that was on the calendar that was maybe going to take place in February without having a permanent city manager. We've pushed that out to a date to still be determined when he or she is hired. And with that, if, are there any other questions that you might have about where we are in the process, or again, the assumptions or the forecast as we move into the rest of the budget process?
I just have a question about, about our 911 call center, and we take calls for sheriff, right? We don't, it's only city?
It's not only city, but it's not the sheriff. We take calls for other fire districts.
Okay. And so we charge them for that?
We do.
And how is that fee determined?
So we base it on the number of calls that are taken. So police and fire do pay the most into the system because of the number of calls that are taken, but it, the initial allocation is based on the number of calls. So it's police department by far, right, receives the most number of calls, the fire department is next, and then the third is the NACFed is the third largest.
And what about the, like, the ambulance service? Do they pay for calls?
No. No.
Okay.
It is just the fires, some fire districts.
I know we had discussed last year in the budget turnover, in which departments had the highest turnover, and I was curious as to whether or not we could offset some of those charges, like, to the, you know, NACFed, I guess, would be the one in this case, increase their rate, what they pay, so that we could in turn maybe look at either raises for those employees or improving their, their work environment in order to try to tackle that turnover to save, save the cost of turnover and kind of strengthen them. Is that?
Those are good ideas.
Is that something we could look at?
Yeah, can definitely get with Chief on that. Good ideas. And just so you're aware, every year, we go through a process of departments requesting minor improvements to their areas, right? And so you'll see what those are requested, but the dispatch center did request a few minor improvements that we're going to be recommending to the council to be put into place for them too.
That's good. If I remember, they were the highest rate of turnover.
I don't remember the exact rate. Krista, yep.
Yeah, the highest. Because I, right, and, and that's, I mean, that's a very important position, but also just, that, that's money that we're kind of bleeding in turnover, so I just wondered if there's a way to kind of look at some of those high turnover rates, and how do we get better retention, but also offset the cost to someone else?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Good ideas. Thank you.
So if I may too, I think Councilmember Staley and I had some discussions also about hiring incentives and, and ways of trying to attract people for difficult-to-fill jobs. And I'm very pleased to report that the council, in its infinite, infinite wisdom, did appropriate money a couple years ago, and there's money in the current year, and so we're starting to utilize those. We have approximately $400,000 that was budgeted that I didn't know, and so HR, I've talked to HR and Tina, and we are identifying criteria when it's appropriate. We're not going to do it on every position, but those that have been historically hard to fill, like maybe the dispatch positions, police officers, professionals like planners and civil engineers, maybe department directors, those will be ones where we can do what I would call would call hiring incentives, maybe even include such things as relocation assistance. And maybe, you know, I'm just throwing a number out, but it might be a $5,000 hiring bonus. And then we'll have some sort of clawbacks on just to ensure that they don't come and then they leave and, you know, get their money and then they leave. We'll have other ways to ensure that they stay once they're on. So, but I just want to let you know that that is something I was looking at going ahead and budgeting a supplement for. And I was very pleased when the finance director told me that we did have the money in. And I asked her if she can go ahead and make sure that that money is in next year's budget. So we're going to, right now it's budgeted as a one-time, but it's going to be in next year's budget, and it's going to be an ongoing. And we'll evaluate that for a couple of years, how well it's working. Hopefully, we can get these positions filled and just keep it there.
Yeah, that's exciting. And can we start using that immediately for?
Yes.
Development Director and engineering, those planning zoning?
The HR director and I've talked, and yes. But before we do that, I mean, like right now, we've talked about the, the development services director as an example. That would not be something we start until probably about eight weeks before Mike Rodriguez leaves. We'll start that recruitment then. We should have the criteria and all like the rules and regs and how that's going to work well in advance of that. I also share that with Rusty, because he's been trying to fill police officers for the last 10 years. And so we do have now the ability to at least be competitive with our peers around the state.
That's great. I did notice, I think I told you, Lake Havasu is offering a bonus for police officers. So being competitive and filling those spots, that's really exciting that we'll be able to give that a shot. Thank you.
Yes, 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 yes.
So just real quickly, I just want to also let you know, we were able to do a couple of things this year, a little bit differently. So one of the things I worked with Tina on trying to move up deadlines on when things were due. So capital improvement budgets were due sooner this year. We also upped or tightened the schedule overall. So we actually have the tentative budget actually adopted in May, and then the final adoption of the budget is actually in June. So that's really good news. And then the other thing that we introduced, the staff has, for the most part, been following this process. So I didn't really introduce anything new. They've always have had this, what I would call, request for anything over and above their base budget they've done in the past. But what we introduced was the concept of base budgeting. So your budget is your budget that you have for the current year. And then anything you want to do over and above that, you need to justify and do a request for anything over and above that. What's a little bit different is Tina, through her analysis, will be identifying the one-time money available and, and the ongoing money that would be available. And then the manager, in this case, because I'll be already gone, but Tina likely will do this before the new manager comes on board. She'll go through and make a recommendation, and she'll have what I call a green sheet. But it'll be the sheet of all the requests, both ongoing and one-time. There'll be positions and programs and services and other enhancements. You'll get to see everything that everybody asks for, okay? And then you'll see a column that will have the town manager, excuse me, city manager recommendation and the amount. And you'll see sometimes the amount may not match up with what is being requested. But the point is, is that this is going to be very transparent. And you'll get to see what was all requested. And you'll get to also be able to ask questions during your budget deliberations. And if you perhaps don't agree with the manager's recommendation, or you like to make adjustments, that is, that's, that's your, you know, as the fiduciary responsibility that you have, that is your policymaking decision that you can do. So just want to let you know, that's a different kind of slightly slant than what we've done in the past. But I have to tell you, in working with Tina, all the process that she has used and the conservative nature of her doing budgets and budget projections and all that, that is going to continue to serve us very well. I did not do anything to change that, because I liked what I saw. And I'm like, this is, this is good. This is a good practice. So just want to let you know, that's a little bit different. And I think it's going to be something going forward will be a good practice.
Yeah, I think you definitely will like to see all of, everything that's requested. I think it's a, I think it was an excellent recommendation by Grady to put into place. Thank you for that. And with that, I just want to say thank you so much. I appreciate your time today. I know everyone's anxious to move into the back room. So I'm always available if you have questions. And I look forward to working with you over the next couple of months. So thank you.
Tina, once again, thank you for that report and update on all that.
Absolutely.
On finances. We appreciate that.
Yep.
Item number two on our agenda, executive session, city manager recruitment process update. Council may go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A1 to review potential city manager candidate applications, discussion, and possible action. Can we have a motion then to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's take a, is five minutes or 10 minutes? Five minutes enough? Take a five-minute break, and then let's meet in the back room, in our conference room. I would like to thank our department heads. The most of them are here today. Thanks for being part of this, and we appreciate you, your support. And have a good evening.
These chairs suck compared to those chairs in there.
Oh, yes.
I like the chair.
No, they're great chairs.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. After council is back from executive session and we had a great meeting with GOV-HR USA, our advisors for our search for our new city manager, and of course we haven't come to any decision, but we did have a great meeting with them and received some great counsel. And because of that, then we are adjourned. Thank you all.